Okay, we'll go ahead and get tonight's meeting started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody to the regular city commission tonight, June 9th, 2025. A roll call.
Benson. Birch.
Present.
Brunick.
Here.
Sarda.
Here.
Conkling.
Here.
Hanoff.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Spencer.
Here.
Mayor Villanueva.
Here.
City manager Leon.
Here.
City attorney Denherter.
Here.
Okay, number two, before you have the minutes of the last regular meeting of May 27th, 2025, what is your pleasure?
I'm moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any commission discussion? Anyone from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, minutes are approved. Okay, schedule of bills, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second to pay the bills. Any commission discussion? Any public discussion? Okay, roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Conkling.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Birch.
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva.
Aye. Okay, motion passes, bills will be paid. And now for item number four, under the routine business, city managers report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and the public. Couple of things for you tonight, and this is an evening where we're going to eat the toad first. So I've got a couple of things that are maybe not as good news as we'd like them to be, and then a couple of things that are good news. So if you just bear with me here, first of all, as you all know, but we want to make sure that the public knows, Lisa got a letter from the South Dakota Department of Revenue. It was not a love letter. They notified us that due to a taxpayer reporting error, some sales tax filings were in error last February. So an amended return was submitted, and of course, the situation was not in our favor. So, in fact, it was a $362,061.87 error. That brings our annual sales tax down from what was a positive 7.3 to a negative .79. So, happy to visit a little bit with the media later, and I know Lisa is happy to answer questions that we can. But the taxpayer information that we get from the state's confidential. So we don't know who made the error, how the error was made, what entity it was. But over the course of, you know, '25, '26, that's going to impact our ability to do the things that we would like to do in our budget. Now, I'm not going to say yet that that means we can't do everything we want to do, but we're definitely going to have to make some choices. And as we prepare for our next week's meeting, which I'll talk about a little later on, where we talk about the capital improvement plan, that's going to change our discussion. So unfortunate for sure, that anomaly was misunderstood, but nobody could really explain it. Well, in fact, it was an error. So, not good news for us in terms of, of sales tax returns. On the flip side, summer is when Yankton kind of shakes off, you know, the cold and gets ready to party, and hopefully with all the visitors that we'll have, and some of the businesses that have opened, and people supporting local businesses will come up in that sales tax and hopefully end up a year ahead. But right now, the situation, I wouldn't say is dire, but we've definitely had better. Next, I want to talk to you a little bit about the fountain on Broadway and Fourth. So take your mind over there. That fountain, right now, needs a new pump, and we're not sure how large of a pump that needs exactly, but there's going to be an expense to that. We had talked about, are there ways we can do things differently with current features when they're in need of repair? That fountain, the history of that fountain is associated with Yankton being called the Fountain City, and a lot of contributors, including the city of Yankton, made that fountain possible. We talked about it at length at Parks today. We decided we're going to fix that pump and see if we can keep it going. The pit that the pump is in is also failing. So when that occurs, there may be a different discussion. How much money do you want to put into a feature? Or can we find some partners that might want to help us? I don't know, but right now, the fountain is not working, and we'll get it running again, and then from there, we'll see how long that repair lasts and probably have a different discussion. But, you know, these are the types of things that are really nice and lovely things, and they're so generously donated, and then we're charged to care for them. And so there's always expense that comes along with that. So just wanted to tell you that. That's the bad news type things I wanted to talk about, or not as good of news as we sometimes talk about. One thing, I do want to point out that as you get down to your agenda items, you have a nuisance abatement role. There are three individuals who were placed in the packet who have since paid. So when you make your motion, I'm going to hand that over to the mayor so he can read what we would like the motion to be, because we would like the names Lee Reindell, Lisa Burling, and Renee Charette to be absent from that list because they have paid. So that is good, three less off that list. A reminder to you that we are going to meet on Monday, June 16th, to review outside agencies, the Triple B, and also our capital improvement plans. So up until a few days ago, we thought we were pretty set, but we're making some adjustments now based on this new information that we have from the state. And we'll be coming forward to you with recommendations. There'll be a packet of information for you to look at, and we'll go through those things and we'll talk about them. There's a lot of time to change what's in that recommendation. As you know, we talk first about outside agencies and the Triple B, as well as capital improvement plan. And then as summer moves on, we talk about operating expenses in each of our budgets. So that's what we know about next week, six o'clock. Open to the public, of course, it is a work session, so you won't be voting on anything, but we will discuss so that we have your direction. Also, please put your hearts and minds and prayers with the Yankton Fire Department. They are on a structured fire right now in the county. And so we want everyone to come back safe, and we'll be thinking of the impacted family as well. Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions or tell a joke, or whatever you'd like me to do.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I did want to take a moment to remember Jerry Nodel. A lot of you knew him. He was an important part of the Yankton City government family for over two decades. Passed away on May 28th. He was the finance, you know, we had L for over 25 years, we all remember L, but prior to him, we had Jerry, who was finance officer from '74 to '95, 21 years. He received the State's Excellence Award for Municipal Accounting, I'm pretty sure every single one of those 21 years, which not everybody does, is not a given. And in 1981, he was awarded the National Finance Officers Association Accreditation for Municipal Accounting. And that, as I understand, was a first for the, for the city of any South Dakota city. So he was an important part of the city, and I just wanted to take a moment to remember his achievements and contributions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanoff, that's very kind, and I appreciate that, that memory.
Amy, can I ask, didn't we have a sales tax item like this come up before, a handful of years ago?
We did.
Amount even, almost?
We did, I believe that was in the amount of, that was December 2023, Lisa's jotting down, and that was in the amount of $300,000 approximately, so yeah, that was. So these things happen, and that's part of the reason why sometimes people say, oh, you guys are so conservative when it comes to estimating what the revenue is going to be. And we, we do that for a reason, because there's humans on every side, and it's also unpredictable what's going to happen in the economy. So we are, we tend to be very conservative on what we think our projected revenue will be. We also have some things that we just absolutely always have to do. Pay the staff, pay benefits, invest in infrastructure. And so fortunately, we'll, we'll weather this. This isn't, the sky isn't falling, and it's just not as sunny as I had wanted it to be in June, post pandemic, post coming out of some things, thinking the economy was a little better than maybe it is. But we'll, we'll just need to be a little more cautious and careful, and we can do that.
That's a great question. One of the things I just want to reiterate too, again, we don't know, again, it was just a mistake, and it is confidential and private, we won't, we don't know, and they will not disclose where that mistake came from.
Correct, we don't know, and I don't think if we ask them, they will tell. Lisa must have already asked them.
Just wondering, thank you.
I, I would just like to add that I'm grateful for the information. I'm grateful to know. This is the time to know, it's before we're doing our budget. This is the time to know this, this kind of information. It's unfortunate, but I would rather know than, than go through all the budget and later then find out. So I think there's, it's beneficial to know what the truth is, right?
Right. Okay, any other discussion? I will take the moment to give a quick shout out. I want to thank the, the Yankton Area Mental Health and Wellness Conference. I had a chance to do a presentation there, and it was, it was a great, great conference. I want to say thank you to them for what they do for our community, for mental health and wellness. Okay, next, number five, do we, we have a public appearance? Anyone from the public can come and speak at the mic for any items not listed on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak for an item not on the agenda? Okay, I'm seeing no movement in the room, so we'll move on to our number two items, consent items. So under consent items, number one, establish a public hearing for sale of alcoholic beverages. Establish June 23rd, 2025 as a date for the public hearing on the request for the special events alcoholic beverage license application for a special on-sale liquor license for two days, September 5th and 6th, 2025, from Gayville Community Fire Department, Inc., doing business as Gayville Fire and Rescue, 404 Meckling Street, Gayville, South Dakota, for an event at the NFAA, 800 Archery Lane, Yankton, South Dakota. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second on the floor for the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Say motion passes. Okay, number three, old business. We have the public hearing and second reading of 2025 Assessment Role Nuisance Abatement. Consideration of memorandum number 25-111 recommending that the Board of Commissioners approve Resolution Number 25-26, approving the attached 2025 nuisances abatement role minus these three names, Renee Charette, Lisa Burling, and Lee Rennell. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
So moved with the removal of those three names.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, a first and a second. Any discussion, commission? Public, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Sarda.
Aye.
Conkling.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Birch.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Number two, under old business, public hearing and second reading for package off-sale liquor license. Consideration of memorandum number 25-115 recommending that the city commission approve the new package off-sale liquor license from Casey's Retail Company, doing business as Casey's, number 3855, 2300 Broadway Avenue. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Moved to approve, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second on the floor. Any discussion, commission?
Uh, one quick question, how many bids did we receive?
We received one bid.
Just the one bid, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, public, any discussion? None, I do see some people from Casey's here, nobody wants to say anything? Okay, fair enough. Okay, with that then, roll call.
Conkling.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Birch.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, number four, new business. Number one, airport hangar number 28 land lease agreement transfer. Consideration of memorandum number 25-103 recommending that the city commission approve Resolution Number 25-25 and the assigned land lease agreement to transfer the airport hangar number 28 land lease from Dr. Robert Newmeyer to New Horizons Revocable Trust. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Moved to approve, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion from the commission? Seeing none? Public, any discussion? Okay, no movement, roll call.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Birch.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Conkling.
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, item number two on our new business, 4th of July fireworks public display. Consideration of memorandum number 25-112 recommending that the city commission approve the request for a public fireworks display hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department on July 4th, 2025. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Moved to approve, second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Moser.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Birch.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Conkling.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, number three on our new business. I have an introduction, first reading, and establish the date for a public hearing for comprehensive plan ordinance number 1097. Consideration of memorandum number 25-113, the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1097, Ideas Flow Here Yankton, 2045, a comprehensive plan for Yankton, South Dakota, and establish public hearing date. Can I get an introduction?
Introduce.
Thank you. Okay, number four, under new business, the Summit Street Water Main Insulation Change Order Number One. Consideration of memorandum number 25-116 recommending that the city commission approve change order number one for the Eighth Street Construction Project in the amount of $55,148. What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Commission, any discussion? Public, any input? Okay, seeing no movement, roll call.
Spencer.
Aye.
Birch.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Conkling.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, number five, conflict legal counsel. Consideration of memorandum number 25-117 recommending at the approval of the proposed agreement to update the Heather La Croix's legal fees for service as conflict legal counsel for the city of Yankton. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Commission, any discussion? Seeing none, public, any input? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Birch.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Conkling.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, number six, on the new business, underneath new business, Paradigm Technologies, Inc. Discussion. Consideration of memorandum number 25-114, an update on the Paradigm Technologies, Inc. project. The, the very nice thing about something like this, again, is this is where a, if two commissioners want to have something placed on the agenda, they can do so under our protocol. Commissioners Hanoff and Conkling were the ones that did that, and again, thank you for, for exercising that right. But one of the things we want to do is we want to talk about this, that this is a, a discussion and a non-actionable item. So I want to make sure.
I specified I wanted to take action when I asked to have it on the agenda.
Okay.
My understanding was that if we don't, you know, if we, we have a discussion, if we don't have some of the answers we want, then we could take an action to, you know, get those answers prepared for us. If that makes any sense?
Okay. Ross, would you like to weigh in on that?
So basically, you'd be, the, the action, what you're describing is a request for staff to gather information.
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the information during the discussion doesn't reveal some of the answers we're looking for, then there would be a request for staff to try to find those answers.
Sure, yeah, I, I'm not sure that requires an official action of the commission, but yeah, we can always chase down information for the commission at their request.
That was my goal.
Okay, to the extent the information's available, put it that way.
Well, it should be.
Or, yeah, or public, that's correct.
Or public.
Okay. Okay, so again, we want to stay, I think it's important to, as we discuss this, one of the things I always want to make sure too is that everyone that comes to our community feels welcome. Everyone that starts a business feels welcome, and like I've said before, that Yankton is open for business. So I want to make sure that we establish that first. Secondly, I want to make sure that we are very careful, and I will have Ross comment on this as well, very careful about how we traverse this discussion as far as that we're, we are not making accusations, we are not coloring outside the line, so to speak, because that could be potentially a problem for us. And so Ross, I will have you weigh in on that, if you would, as far as kind of our bumpers, I guess?
Sure, okay. All right, so my thoughts on this are making it clear the box that this, that the city fits here. So we had a contract a couple of years ago to sell this piece of property, two or three years ago, I think, to sell this property through Thrive to a private company for economic development purposes. That contract had certain requirements that had to be met. If I was going to summarize those, it would be, there had to be a structure built that had landscaping and aesthetic design criteria that had to be approved by the city, and that was in fact done. Beyond that, the contract indicates that there's certain uses within the confines of zoning, that if the uses change, it has to be approved by the city. And if there is green space to the north end of the property that isn't used by 2032, the city has options to repurchase. So apart from that, the contract, from the perspective of the city, is fulfilled. So we got to understand, you know, what is the city's role to play? There really isn't any right now. It can be triggered by the passage of time with the options to repurchase, or changes of use that aren't approved by the city, but apart from that, there really isn't any action for the commission to take. So to the extent conversation goes beyond that, I would just encourage all of you to be careful. There's lots of rumors floating around and things of that nature, and I don't want anybody to, to state something that could be perceived as, you know, slander, disparagement in some way that could be actionable either for the city or individual commissioners. So I would just leave you with that cautionary warning.
Okay, and what I will request of you, Ross, is that if we start treading into that water, please just chime in, and I will do my best to do as well.
Yeah, I, I always want to be careful not to boss you guys around, so to speak. You're, you're welcome to have your, your discussion time. But if I feel like anybody's saying something that could get the city or any of you individually in some trouble, I'll speak up.
Thank you, appreciate that. Dave, was there anything you would like to add to this at all, or is it pretty much covered? Okay, sounds good. Okay.
First of all, there may be a misconception as to, you know, what kind of information we're looking for, and certainly it's not to disparage the, the company. I think it's more so to try to use this as an instructive experience and learn what we could have done differently as a city to maybe get a more positive outcome. The owner of the company did what any businessman would do, he made a shrewd deal, I think it was a smart deal for him. I, I question whether the city should have made the deal, and that's what we're here to talk about. I agree. I've had numerous people contact me wanting to know when they're going to open. I know Brian has too. And even though they've met the, the terms of the contract, which I think was a bad contract, I think it's fair, because this is representative of the citizens, this was done on their behalf. They want to know what's going on. So the action I would like is for somebody from city management to contact the owner and ask for an updated anticipated opening date. And as of right now, he doesn't even have a sales tax license. So I'd like to, like to have an idea of when he plans on opening, because originally it was spring of '24, so we're over a year now. So again, like Brian said, this isn't anything against Paradigm, but the citizens want to know what's going on, and I think that's a fair question for them.
I would just weigh in on that, that there's no way the city can compel that information? We can certainly ask.
I know, but I think that would be telling too, if, if we can't get an answer. But I, I understand it's not something he has to do, but I think as a good businessman, it was some, something that he probably would do. My question also, in regard to Dave's memo about the obligations that he has fulfilled. First bullet point was construct, constructed and occupied the structure within the required timeframe. And I guess the definition of occupied could, could vary. I suppose an attorney will have a different one than my thought would be. My thought would be the business would be open and employing the 2025 people that were talked about, and, and it doesn't appear close to that at this point.
The contract did not specifically require that there be a, a date open for business. That's not a contract term.
So then where are you getting occupied?
I don't know where, there may already in fact be a certificate of occupancy for the building, yeah. Meaning it, it's built to code. Been approved for use.
So just so everybody, especially out on YouTube, heard this. So Mr. Mingo, you're saying that, if you wouldn't mind going to the mic, thank you. So just to be clear, the question was, is there a certificate of occupancy had been issued?
Correct, and, and the bar in that respect with any project, any structure, is when the certificate of occupancy is issued. It's, that building is deemed occupied.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion, questions?
Well, it'll be interesting to see if we can get that updated timeline or target date. I think that's not too much to ask. You have to remember, citizens made a huge investment in this facility. Not only did we sell the land for millions less than it was worth, the city taxpayers will end up paying probably 75% of the infrastructure costs because the revenue assumptions and the TIF only realistically are going to cover about a fourth of that. So the city's made a huge, the city taxpayers, the citizens have made a huge investment in that property. We're asking questions because we think they deserve the answers, and right now, the answer they want is, when is it going to open? We've missed the original target date by over a year. So thank you. I'd like to also, Dave, if you could arrange it, or at least request it, get us a tour of the facility as commissioners.
Mr. Mingo, would you be willing to have, to reach out to Dr. Kenfield?
I, I certainly will. Part of the discussion that I'm, that I'm hearing that I, I didn't know was going to be a part of the discussion until Commissioner Hanoff sat down and asked me some questions in the beginning, has more to do with the mead development and the city serving as the developer. And all of the memos from the years gone by when, when that was set up include all that information about how that tax increment district was created, not specific to any one business that, that may or may not have ended up being located there. So it seems like we need, need to do a little kind of brush up on the philosophy of that specific tid and how it's so different than others. The main beneficiaries of that tid are Yankton's property that the Soccer Association sits on, which is non-taxable. The other largest frontage owners, the state of South Dakota on the north side of 33rd Street, which is non-taxable. And that was all known going in to the creation of this development, once the Soccer Association decision was made, that the tid was just going to be one of the numerous funding components that would get the infrastructure needed to make that development happen. So rather than make you go back and, or ask you to go back and read all those, all those memos that describe that upfront, maybe we'll do a little summary document.
So I guess I would, I would ask you, would you be, commissioners, would you be willing just to have Mr. Mingo follow up then, and then? just to have Mr. Mingo follow up then, and then, and come back and report to you? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, all right.
But I would prefer it be at a meeting as opposed to an email, so the public has access to the information also. I agree.
Okay.
But I think something like that will be published in our meetings, our minutes. I'd hate for us to bring a businessperson in to describe what's happening in their business. If we start playing that, we just opened a whole box, and we could start bringing other people. That's my only concern, is it's a private business. And I mean, to be honest with you, I'm probably a little more concerned about American Foods. I mean, I look at that, that's a business that's in our community also. Do we want them to come in and explain what they've done to their, and they've got a huge building, two, multiple buildings in our community. And, you know, I mean, we could just keep going on and on. I just want to be careful that we don't start doing that to private business owners, that who have invested a lot in our community. Whether or not we like how the deal got brought forth, and that's in the past, right? So we can't keep going back and back, but I'm okay if we get something from the person, but I would hate to make them come in front of us, because that could just go on forever.
The one piece I do want to just remind all of you is, all Dave can do is ask. And this individual has absolutely no obligation to give any of us or anybody else in the community any information at all, whether we think he should do it from a moral, a place of a moral obligation or otherwise, he has no obligation to provide anything. So please do not think that we have any way to compel that information if asked, and it's not voluntarily provided. So just a caveat for you.
Well, we just want it to be instructive, so that in the future, maybe we need to set those obligations a little more specifically, requiring a little more fulfillment of what we expect we're going to get.
And Commissioners Sarda and Hanoff, I mean, you both make very good points. You're right, we can't just, we don't want to be calling people in here that own private businesses, as well as, I do like, we've already made that decision, but going forward, maybe there's some things that we need to potentially adjust, so that's, that's a good, very good point.
I agree on that too, yeah.
Yeah.
Learn from it.
Yep, that's right. Okay, well then, moving on from that, we'll go on to future business. Any commissioners have any future business they'd like to bring up for next time on agenda? Anything? Okay. Right now, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and public safety plans under SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved.